Thank you, sir. Second, I'd like to welcome everybody who's with us this morning this year for the Board of Education meeting and staff at the Center. Welcome those folks that are watching this online on Rebel TV as well. We appreciate all of you being a part of our meeting. If everybody would please rise for item number two, which is the invocation, and remain standing for item number three, which is the Pledge of Allegiance. And I'm going to ask Robert Enslie if he will please lead us in the invocation. Mr. Enslie?
Let's pray. Father God, thank you so much for what you do for us each and every day. What a blessing it is to be able to serve your children. Lord, I pray that you be, you put your hedge of protection around our school system, that you continue to bless us, that you protect our students, our staff, everyone that's involved with this organization. We are so blessed. Lord, I pray that you be with our board members tonight. Lord, that you give them the wisdom to be able to do the things that you want us to do, that we will serve you, and that we will look forward to the things that you have got planned. We thank you again, Lord. Just pray that you be with us. Amen.
Thank you, Mr. President. And for pledge, Mr. Barron, there you go.
By the United States of America, we are one nation, one God, indivisible, everything.
Thank you. You may be seated. Mr. Chair, item number four is to approve the consent agenda, and this is comprised of two parts. The first is to approve tonight's agenda, and the second is to approve minutes. So at this time, I'm going to ask Mr. Enslie to open up those minutes for the letter B under number four. And this is the July 21st call meeting at 5:00 PM. And next up is July 21st regular meeting at 5:30 PM. Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of item number four, consent agenda as presented. I hear your motion. You have that motion? Motion to approve. As of today. In a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Once unanimous, motion carries. Okay, thank you. Our next item, special recognition is number five. Board, I am so pleased to have several of our custodians from Fannin County School System that are present with us today. And we're going to take a moment, and we are going to recognize them for all of the hard work that has gone on in our schools over the summer to make the buildings just look fantastic. And so what I'd like to do is invite each principal up, and you can come up to the podium with your staff and introduce them to us. And then as we recognize each school, we're just going to kind of keep you off the side, and then we'll take pictures after everybody has been up, similar to what we did last time. So for our first school, let's start with Blue Ridge Elementary School, Dr. April Hodges. Here she is. Dr. Hodges? Next up, East Fannin, Matt Price.
Good morning, Board. Tonight, I have the all three of mine. I have Mr. Dave Patterson.
Come on up, gentlemen. Yeah, come on up.
Mr. Wayne Woody and Mr. Sirgon Davis. They did an A's and G's.
West Fannin and Allison?
I was instructed to take out the microphone. Alright, so I need my West Fannin custodians. They're following behind me because they're just like that. They're wonderful. I have Mr. Philip Barker, Tommy Gibbs, and Melissa Ratcliffe, and they are absolutely amazing at what they do, keeping our school clean. Thank you.
Thank you. Alright, Mr. Mark Young?
As you can see, I don't really have the guys with me tonight, so they're busy working. So, and I was instructed to make sure that GW Mathis does not get the microphone. So I would like to say a few words about these guys. I appreciate what they do every day, building up strength this summer. They're dedicated, hardworking. But the one thing that I wanted to say about them that I really want everybody to understand is they take ownership of the building. These guys have pride in what they do. And the middle school belongs to them. So the way it looks and the atmosphere, it makes a difference to them. They make my job very easy because I don't have to worry about the custodial duties. They work as a team, and so that's just one thing as a principal, I don't have to worry. I appreciate that about them because I have nothing to worry about. I don't have to worry about what's going on in the custodial world. So I don't know if they're watching. They couldn't be here tonight for real. So I hope they're here more happy to say that I appreciate these three men. And we're looking for another one. If anybody knows, someone who would like a good custodial position at Fannin Middle School. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Rivers, Fannin County High School.
Well, I brought my entire crack staff of custodians with me. We'll let them all get in here. So first, we have Mr. Tim Wooten, Mr. GW Mathis. You already heard about him. His reputation precedes him, and if he gets the mic, we'll be here for a while. Mr. Dan Brown, Chuck Taylor, Sharon Long, Junior Ray, and Mike Hoopah. Yes, that's Hoopah. Guys, the job that they do is phenomenal every day. I mean, our school looks phenomenal. And we have a big campus, and it's really spread out, so it does take a lot of work and a lot of effort from these guys, and they do it every day without complaint. So we are thrilled to have them. That middle school job offer does not apply to y'all. So just make sure that we're not even thinking about that, but I appreciate them so much.
Ladies and gentlemen, let's give them a round of applause. Now, what I'd like to do, because we have great turnout for this, and I want to just, from the bottom of my heart, I want to thank you for what you do, and I want to thank you for being here tonight. That means a great deal to me that we can honor you and respect you. If I could, I guess we need to take some of the folks, and we'll just put them right here in the middle, and then the board kind of flank them on the sides, and we can get it. You want to do it? Would that work better to do it by school? Do you think we could get a picture with everybody? I think, you think we could get a picture with everybody? Okay, yeah, scrunch it in, and come on up, and whip us a little up here, and then we'll do by school as well. Hey, hold on. Hold on. Be careful. This is an amazing group. Let's give them one more round of applause. Before anybody runs off, Board and everybody, let's take the, let's oblige, and let's get the individual school photos with their principal and their board. So let's start with Fannin County High School, because you've got the most, and so, yeah. No, no, nobody jump. Safety, safety, safety. And Board, we'll come back around and we'll take photos with the schools. High school staff, thank you so much. Okay, Matt? Bring your folks over, Matt.
Our audience is going to have, going to leave, thankful place, and out for all of the schools of the first day of class. And honestly, they looked better than new. It's remarkable that the job that you guys have done, and ladies, it's truly remarkable. Thank you.
Thank you, East Fannin. Blue Ridge? Thank you, Blue Ridge. And West Fannin. Thank you so much, West Fannin. Ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate you so much being a part of our meeting. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Chair. Item number six is school governance team update, and I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Superintendent Sarah Rigdon.
Good afternoon, Board. Tonight, I stand before you with a quick update about what's going on with our SGTs. Of course, July is our reorganizational month, and so this past month, all of the teams did meet. They did a lot of housekeeping chores. If you don't, there you go. Thank you, Ms. Enslie. You'll see up here a list of all the individuals who have agreed to be a part of our SGTs. As a quick reminder, you can keep scrolling as I speak. The star denotes if it's a new member, because these are two-year terms. And the hashtag or pound sign, pound symbol, is the vice chair. So if something were to happen and the chair could not conduct the meeting, the vice chair in their place would stand up, step up, and do the job. Thank you, Ms. Enslie. Let's see, and as an update, here's what was going on in the month of July. Of course, they did a whole lot of introductions, made sure that everybody knew who was a part of the team. And then they did a lot of housekeeping things. They elected vice chairs, they talked about their compliance director modules, all the things that are required of SGT members. Just as you do every year, they did receive the code, let's see, the Code of Conduct, and also the policy about conflict of interest, which they all had to review and sign annually. A lot of other things that were going on, looking at approving student handbooks, reviewing the student code of conduct, because of a very slight change to those, a very small tweak. And so a lot of just very standard types of things for a July meeting. They have also set their meeting days and times for the beginning school year, and those dates have been posted in the schools themselves, on the schools' websites. And they've also been provided to our media through a distribution list. So we're off to a great start, looking forward to working with all of our teams at our schools. Does anyone have any questions?
I've commented.
Okay.
I was at Tom's.
I agree with you, Mr. Joyce. They've done a remarkable job, and the people who do serve on those SGTs, not only are they devoting time, because most SGTs meet not every month, at least every other month, so a lot of personal time is being devoted to it, but they also put a whole lot of heart into this. They're there to support those schools, make sure that their initiatives and their priorities stay at the forefront. Because remember, an SGT is not like you. You are a law, you are a policymaking body. They are not policymakers. What they are charged with doing is improving student achievement and student opportunity at the school level, and they are doing a phenomenal job of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rigdon. Board, central office updates, number seven, and we have a series of updates for you. And the first is Dr. Connie Huff. You have some visitors with you. I'm bringing them in. Don't be shy.
Sorry, I couldn't see there. Hey, ladies, come on down. Board, thank you for having us.
Tell us who's here.
Here with you this afternoon, I have the very distinct pleasure of having the parent liaisons from each of our schools with us. Now, some of you up there may have phone calls quite regularly, so you'll know the voices of these ladies, even if you don't recognize their faces. As you all know, for a school system, for individual schools and students to be successful, we have to foster that relationship with parents, because it takes teamwork to raise these children. And a lot of parents have questions that, well, I don't really want to go to the principal, and the teacher's kind of busy. Who can I find things out from? And these ladies fill the gap for that. So here next to me from Blue Ridge Elementary, I have Ms. Holly Ross. I have next from West Fannin is Shannon Shopey. East Fannin, Ms. Robin Kirby. New Robin Stevens. What voice over there? Alright, they, they were a little hesitant about cutting the speech. And I said, how do you always do such a good job smoothing things over? She put the jinx on me there. Our new addition to the group this year is.
They don't have, they don't have speeches?
No, they're the creative sort, so they got a little something extra special for us, because remember, they like to be the voice, if not the face, of what's going on. So Dawn is new to this group this year with an addition of parent liaisons at the high school, and then we have, probably call her by her maiden name, but Ms. Katie Sebold down at the end from the middle school. Now, Mr. Enslie is going to queue up a video for us that these creative ladies have put together.
Give them lights, please.
Hi, this is Autumn Haden from the high school. We're so happy to have students back in our hallways. We have two open houses, our traditional one, as well as a special one for our new freshman focus group. Parents and students were welcomed to campus by our talented drum line, club sponsors, and CTAE teachers, who have created displays so that they would know about all the wonderful opportunities here at the high school. Freshmen were then broken into small groups and were given tours by student ambassadors. After meeting with our teachers, we ended the evening with a cookout, a very special thank you to our coaches for cooking, and for our partnership with Fannin County empty stocking and Tri-State EMC, who made this event possible. While we had a few nervous faces that first day of school, everyone has heard their do-rite speeches and are sailing into the new school year. We are so excited to see their accomplishments and to make this the best year yet. Now let's hear from the middle school.
Hey, everyone, it's Katie Sebold at Fannin Middle. We are off to a great start for the 2022-2023 school year. Leading up to our open house, our FFA students and their advisor, Mr. Davis, took the day to clean our flower beds and lay down mulch at the entrance of our school. It looks amazing, and we are so proud of all the hard work that they did that day. Our faculty and staff worked very hard to prepare the school for a great turnout we had at open house. It was wonderful to see our returning students and also meet our new students and their families. Our students got a chance to meet all of their teachers, tour the school, and check out our extracurricular activities we have to offer. We also showed our Title I and curriculum video in our gym that day. We created a back-to-school photo booth with props for our students. Everyone had a blast having their pictures taken. SCMS alumni students stopped by, and we even had some of our district leaders join in on the fun. We can't wait to see what our students accomplish this school year. Now let's turn it over to our elementary schools.
Thank you, Katie. This is Holly Ross from Blue Ridge Elementary. Each year, our students and staff create, vote on, and choose our theme. Once our theme is decided, our staff collaborate and create the graphic. This theme gets carried throughout our entire school year. Mission Possible, You Can Do It, is our school theme this year, and our staff have been busy getting in the detective spirit for some exciting posters for our hallways. Just check out that classroom management from Ms. Chu. It was wonderful to see our families back at open house. They met with their kiddo's teacher, learned about our Title I program, and asked any questions that they may have had about the new year at our parent resource station in the cafeteria. As you can see, a lot of our staff have taken the theme idea and created activities and decorations to welcome their students and families back to the RDS. Look at this awesome invisible ink that fifth grade did for each student to find their own seat and Friday folder. Now let's hear from Robin on the east side.
We had a great first week at East Fannin. We loved seeing all of our returning and new students and parents during open house and on the first day of school. During open house, Ms. Brown had a green screen set up in the media center where families could go have a fun photo taken, which she then turned into a slideshow that was posted to our Facebook and GoToPage pages. Here, we also have a few pictures of students and families during open house and the first day of school. A student and parent favorite at East Fannin is the tooth wall. Every year is a big deal to students to try to make it on the wall, and parents have continuously commented how much they love seeing their child's picture posted. As of last Friday, we had three excited students to lose a tooth already and make it on the wall. Exciting things are already happening in STEM class. This shows some pictures of students hard at work on projects already. This year, our STEM and creative arts class are side by side, and we are very excited to see how closely they will be working together. Now, last but not least, the west side.
Robin, hi, this is Shannon Shopey from West Fannin, and we visited our first annual walk party after open house this year. Other than the weather, it was a huge success. We ended up bringing the outside in due to rain, but we had cornhole, Jenga, and other games down the hallway. It was still a great time, and I think our families loved it, and I really think they liked being back in the building. Valley River Chevrolet sponsored all of the food for our staff and families. Pirquitos catered in, and I think we probably had about five to six hundred tacos, so everybody's bellies were definitely full. Our theme this year, light, camera, human action. We started off the year during pre-planning. The Alliance Theater came in for orientation with our teachers. Ben Sexton and his assistant Amber Mitchell applied for a grant through Georgia Department of Education, and West Fannin was awarded $20,000. We will be using this to partner with an in-person residency program at the Alliance Theater. They will help us integrate the arts into instruction. In addition, our teachers will have professional learning with the Center for Puppetry Arts. The colorful movie projector that you see on the right-hand side will be the graphic on our T-shirts this year. Sixteen businesses, which were mostly parent, sponsored these shirts, so all of our students and all of our staff receive a free T-shirt, and they list the names alphabetically of the businesses that allowed us to purchase these shirts on the back. We use these for field day, field trips, and for Friday spirit wear. We all came together for a very important day this summer. The summer bash on July 9th was a great event for our family. We'd like to thank the masterminds behind this event, Tara Cantrell and Sheena Reimer. We helped 344 families.
With at least 150 haircuts, 260 dental screenings.
200 backpacks, and the schools also gave out over 200 backpacks at their open houses. 50 sports physicals.
15 3300 forms and 234 health screenings were completed.
Local businesses donated off concession items. 200 cookies and over 200 hot dog meals were served to families. We would all like to thank you for allowing us to showcase our schools this evening.
Dr. Huff, for ladies, is there anything else that you'd like to add on that? We're thankful for you and the service that you provide for your school communities, and it was wonderful to see all those parts of you that showcased the buildings that were right, that were best of. The other, I think, that was really nice. Thank you so much for coming to our meeting. Our next one is Director of Learning and Achievement, Lucas Root. He's going to share an update on the Fannin County Teacher of the Year process. Mr. Root?
There we go. This will be very quick. Good evening, Board. Just to give you an update on the Teacher of the Year process. Our school Teacher of the Year winners will be interviewed tomorrow by an external panel of interviewers from Pioneer Risa to determine who our school-level, school-system Teacher of the Year will be. The school-level Teacher of the Year nominees being interviewed tomorrow are from Blue Ridge Elementary School, Alex Whitner, from East Fannin Elementary, Tiffany Brown, West Fannin Elementary, Stacy Herndon, Fannin County Middle School, Amanda Thomas, and Fannin County High School, Mandy Houseley. We will announce the winner at our annual Teacher of the Year banquet on Tuesday, September 13th. Board members, please save that date. You will be receiving your official invitation to this wonderful, wonderful event very, very soon. That's it. No videos. Simple.
Just the facts.
Just the facts.
Yeah.
Just the facts.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Root about teaching? It'll be a big day tomorrow for those teachers, so we'll certainly keep them in thoughts and prayers as they move forward.
Absolutely.
Through tomorrow. So thank you so much, Mr. Root. We appreciate it. Next up is Director of Finance, Susan Nguyen, going to give us an update on the 2021 sales ratio study. Oh, I'm sorry, Heather, how did I do that? Because you've got a beautiful slide to share. It's an incredible slide. I'm sorry, Heather. Yeah, go for it. That's what happens when I take my glasses.
We have historically in the past distributed a, how we tell parents how schools close, and so we've kind of changed that up this year a little bit to how, all the ways we communicate with people in the community, and parents, stakeholders. And so we've kind of got like a one-stop shop here. All of these icons on here are interactive, so a person can click on them, and it will take them to the link that we are representing. So in the middle, oh, you can't remember. Go back a little bit. Hold on. All in the middle are all of our websites, our main district website, and then each circular icon for our schools represents their school website. And then, starting on the left, you click on that, it will take you to Infinite Campus, the parent portal. People always forget where that is, and instead, rather than dig on our website, we'll have it right there on the top of our website, this graphic, and you can go straight to this and get to all these things. Safe Schools is our way for anyone to report something, any type of misbehavior, bullying, cyberbullying. any type of misbehavior, bullying, um, cyberbullying, anything like that on our Safe Schools app. And so they can do that anonymously on there. Then all of our social media sites are there, our hotline number, Rebel Radio, Rebel TV, that we do all of our sports and board meetings on and other events at the schools. And here comes the bus, so you can sign up there and see when your bus is going to arrive in the afternoons. And then also a link to our school calendar. So all the really important links are all now on one page. We're going to push that out on social media and have a link on our, the front page of our website as well for that. It's just an easy place to dig up for people to find the most commonly used links in our system.
And these are, these are the district tools, with the exception of the school sites.
Yes, everything we use district, yeah. Schools all have, you know, some extra things, but these are things that are all used in the district public.
And, and that's great because you've made it so easy and you put it in one place. So thank you so much for your work on this document. I hope parents and school will use it and appreciate it because that was very important. Every, every one of these icons that he clicks on, it opens up directly to that link and that part of our school system that, uh, that we engage the community. Thank you so much, Heather. That's great work. Okay, now, Susan Nguyen. So hot off the press, uh, which we normally would cover this when we discuss the village rate, but we received a sales ratio information recently. So you can share a little bit of information about that. We'll follow up on it next morning.
Good evening, Whitey Board. Um, just a quick update on the things that happened since the last board meeting. On August the 4th, we received our 2021 sales ratio study. And our sales ratio is 30.35. And the sales ratio, as I had talked about in our previous budget meeting, is determined by dividing the current assessed valuation of the property by the sales of that property. So the sales ratio is required to be between 36 and 44, with an ideal ratio being 40. And so with our ratio being 30.35, that is what has driven the countywide reassessment because they had to do the reassessment in order to get the countywide ratio back into compliance with the Department of Revenue. So that has taken place and the property valuation notices have been mailed. People have received those. But as in our first and our second public budget meeting that we had in July and in August, we recommended that we would go with a calculated rollback rate, whatever that rate would be. And even though our last rate was 10.159, we've been discussing would it be below 10? Um, but, so we've been working on that. We have received some preliminary numbers, um, that I've been able to calculate a projected rollback, which would be around 7.58. Now, these numbers are not final. They won't be final until the last day of August. So I won't have the actual rollback rate to give you until our September 8th meeting, which then I will give you that rollback rate and give you the five-year history and ask for approval for us to advertise that. And then to have our call meeting, which I believe we've got something for you now.
Do you have a timeline in there, Mr. Nguyen?
On our timeline.
Swivel back. Uh, there you go.
So as we had already adopted this timeline on September the 8th, I will have, by that time, I'll have the actual digest numbers so I can present to you the actual rollback rate and the actual five-year history for approval for us to advertise on September the 14th. And then maybe by next Monday, y'all can come up and give me, um, the date of the call meeting because that will go in our advertiser that will need to do that the 22nd, 23rd, or 26th. But the projected range would be 7.58, what we need to say.
Okay, so when those assessments went out, folks, you know, saw a number that was just based on the new reassessment and that was as applied to last year's village rate.
Last year's village rate because they can't put any other village rate than the last adopted village rate that we had.
And so what you just indicated tells me that the village rate that we're expecting first of all
In, in calculating the rollback, the rollback is to calculate it so you don't have a net tax increase. So the evaluations went up a lot, but then the rollback going down, uh, again. So it should help to offset.
And going back to that document, it's translated, it's like, it's like we're right on schedule and everything. So kind of follow up on the dates and provide them at the bottom of the board what we know is we need to have a call meeting on those three days.
We do, because we have to adopt it and then turn it into county. The county has to adopt theirs and turn it into the state October 1st.
And so once we approve that, this does actually helps us to take that from here to there. So we can make it 22nd, 23rd, or 26th, we don't have to commit that, just use the chair. We'll follow up. Now, sack. Any questions for Mr. Nguyen?
When you say evaluation, I mean, that means values.
Yes, sir, the reassessment, a lot of people, their value of their property went up because it had to be in the correct range based on the sales that had, had been going up. But when you put in the state formula into the state form, that is supposed to take it to make sure that no one has a tax increase if you go with a rollback rate. And if we didn't go with a rollback rate, then you're going to have three additional meetings, three things published in the paper and come up with what percentage of the tax increase. So, you know, the rollback rate is what we had already said in our other meetings we were going to, we planned on adopting. So we'll just have to wait a little longer to have that final number.
And this will now remain public, public address. All right, no further questions. Ms. Nguyen, thank you so much for the update. All right, finally, Mr. Enslin.
This is Mr. Robert Enslin, giving us some information about the transportation facility. Open house. Good afternoon, Board. I am excited to share with you that we are ready for our open house for our transportation facility. It's been a long time coming. And, uh, of course, we're just right across the, the hill, right across the parking lot, I guess. Uh, and basically, we're going to have a open house on August the 18th, which is a week from today. It will start, we'll have a, um, open house from 8 o'clock to 9 o'clock. And then at that time, uh, we will have the ribbon cutting there at the transportation facility. So we're extremely excited to get in our new building. Uh, we want to thank the News Observer for, uh, the publicity you guys gave us this week about the, having the pictures and things on it. So that was very beneficial. Thank you, Mr. Danner, for what he's done for us, uh, in getting that, that building constructed. So we're excited to get there. Our, our bus drivers, we kind of planned it this way, where our bus drivers could come after their routes, where they could enjoy the facility as well and be a part of the ribbon cutting. So we're excited.
Next Thursday, 8 a.m.
Next Thursday, 8 a.m. We'd love to see you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Enslin. Okay, item number eight, public comment. Mr. Danner? Okay, no public comments, so we'll advance to item number nine, facilities and construction update. Mr. Danner?
Well, that's probably getting several here over there. I thought it was fitting, uh, since we recognize our custodians. Actually, these are pictures I showed last, last four days. Since last four days, it's three weeks, two weeks, about just a day. So, uh, it's all reverted back and it's all good. And I just pulled up ones just to show you some of the work that I did. Absolutely amazing. And, uh, we had a little fun there at our K Y M service. That, uh, you know, was where, that was spoke a bit of surprise for Dr. Quatton. Everybody in the whole system wearing T-shirts, we all have Fannin T-shirts. And of course, they always find out about that, if you see them from the picture. So, uh, there was one woman on his desk, he put it on. So, uh, we have a little fun back there. That's a great thing. The office, the staff, back. It was a good time. At our facilities, um, I'm sorry, our, our construction, uh, this was about 6:50 a.m. Back sub at, uh, Park Lot, I don't know the sign over there, look there. Little Woody's Park Lot, uh, I point this right at you.
Postcard, Mr. Enslin.
So again, and, uh, notice today, we have a contractor actually, uh, more than asked. Time to get our little partners to see. Again, this was 32nd after taking that up. Several pictures now are at the transportation facility. Office there, we got the mine is small. That's not, that's a bus waiting room. Like that's the lips, I don't know if that's the lips or the accident. Back rhythm, I didn't show the whole picture again. Black, black, orange layer, that's where you follow. For the side, I know. Absolutely amazing. Vice President also had a talk about salt, both of these buildings. Count access and both. Have more in mind, you're a great burden, we've locked this place there. Same thing, all of us. Also, both instances. Both, they actually are part of the world. Right in the best.
Support any questions for Mr. Nguyen?
Sorry, I'm sure that shout out to the Bank of Quatton, so July, March, 347. Please did, ordered one. That makes I asked about it, you know, so we called them. We asked the school, see something?
Thank you, Mr. Danner. I swear, I'm also saying just about how much is happening. All right, let's take a look at our first item of business, number 10, to approve a change to a fund source for the West Bannon Elementary School window project. Go ahead and open up to them. Uh, thank you, Mr. Enslin. Tell us what you got here, Mr. Danner.
Uh, back in August the 11th of last year, uh, remember, I presented you a big idea. Windows, West Bannon, again, that I opened. So what we did is we went to get at least every classroom, every room, had one impressive window that you actually used. At that point, we would, uh, that's where the bed, money, that they, art, they you got approved. So that's what I'm trying to do. I'll go back to the number that I had. Yes. Go back to, I'm sorry, in October, 13th, 21, we approved the windows that they made about, uh, art. So some paperwork and everything has not been, um, you know, approved by the P O E. Windows are completely, they are absolutely beautiful. So that goes back to the So the whole thing I'm asking to do is, uh, we've got some local vendors and a local supplier that's actually done the work for us to do all the bidding process and that sort of thing. So instead of using art money, they produce cost, not art money. How does that change the funding source?
Fair enough. Make recommendations, Mr. Chair.
A recommendation to approve this change of fund source. No move?
Mr. Enslin?
Second.
Mr. Enslin, Mr. Paul, any discussion? All is in favor?
Motion, animals, motion, care.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Danner. Next up, school quarterly financial reports for approval. Mr. Enslin, please, of course, this is Ms. Nguyen, welcome back.
And we have our school quarterlies, this is Blue Ridge Elementary, and we can kind of just scroll through. These actually go from July 1st of last year through June 30th of this year. So you're actually, even though they're quarterly, they have all, all quarters combined. Uh, here you have West Bannon. And then you have a school. And we have the high school. And we have CTA. I've got to present all the schools going forward.
Thank you. Make the recommendations to present or to approve as presented, Mr. Chair.
Should I make a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion, Mr. Enslin? I have to say. What's your second? Any discussion? All is in favor? Motion, animals, motion, care.
Thank you. Item number 12, approve district financial report, Ms. Nguyen.
Okay, so we have our June 30th, um, financial report for 100% of the fiscal year complete. We can, we can have our local sources of revenue at 104.58% of the budget versus 108.82. Total revenues at 102.86 versus 105.18. Total expenditures, 89.60 versus 91.62 from the prior year. And, and as from the prior year, all accruals have not been posted. This is more modified cash accrual. Then we have our other special revenues. So nutrition. And that presents our financial status, Virginia.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, recommend to approve as presented.
Your motion to approve the district financial report, Ms. Nguyen. No move?
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion? All is in favor? Motion, animals, motion, care.
Thank you. Ms. Nguyen, SPOS update, number 13.
Yes, our, our June, we received 888,206 dollars in 89 debt on July 4th, June.
We are blessed to be at Fannin County.
We are. It's an excellent report for June.
Yes, sir.
It's a record.
No, no actions needed on that, other than just thankfulness. Uh, item number 14, annual SPOS audit engagement letter. Let's talk about SPOS auditing.
Yes, sir, so we can click there. It is a blessing. Uh, engagement letter first, please. Okay, so we received July 14th, our engagement letter from Malden and Jenkins. All counties that receive more than $5 million automatically have an audit each year. Um, so we can kind of just slowly go, stop right there, please. Go back. Okay. I'm going to go a little bit over on the objectives of what Malden and Jenkins will do. Number one is to determine whether the schedule of projects adheres to approved resolution adopted by Fannin County Board of Education. Number two, determine the reporting effectiveness for the school system, Board of Education, communication status for capital outlay projects to ensure legislative, regulatory, and organizational goals, uh, objects are achieved. Determine the reliability of the monitoring function. Determine whether there's effective means of monitoring program performance. Determining the reliability, fidelity, relevance of the financial analysis. And determine the effective procedures exist to verify that design and construction of the capital project adhere to the quality control standard. And to determine the effectiveness of financial controls in place, um, to ensure the receipt of the expenditures of tax revenue funds are in compliance with our laws and regulations. And to determine whether the school system is following board-approved procurement policies and procedures. So that's just, and the rest of it is just, I'm not going to go through the rest of it. We can kind of scroll through. But that's the main objectives. And then we can go to the other document. But that's the very first thing that they have spelled out that they will look at and I'll reopen the other one. So the very first item, and then just scroll to A dash one, um, that is on the purpose. The very first thing is to make sure that we have followed what is in the document that was voted on. And that's for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and equipping the following capital outlay projects. The very first thing is to make sure that we have followed what is in the document that was voted on, and that's for the purpose of acquiring, constructing, and equipping the following capital outlay project. Adding to re- renovations. Say it better. Adding to renovating, repairing, improving, equipping, and demolishing existing school buildings. School system facilities, parking lots, and driveways. Physical education, athletic facilities and fields. Updating and purchasing H V A C systems. System technology, electrical systems, nutritional equipment, electrical communication systems. Acquiring new computer hardware technology. Equipment, safety and security equipment and software. Acquiring miscellaneous new equipment, fixtures, and furnishings for the school district. Acquiring school buses and other vehicles and transportation maintenance equipment and facilities. Acquiring, constructing, and equipping new buildings and facilities useful and desirable, including but not limited to a new stand steam science wing at Fannin Middle School. A new health and wellness multiple purpose facility. A new professional development facility. Acquiring and are approving laying out for the school system. Um, facilities and purchasing traditional and electronic textbooks. And purchasing new upgrades to preempt for electronic media questions. So Malden Jenkins will actually take this referendum and go through to make sure that we're following this.
Okay, so this is gonna require approval?
It's just for, it does not require approval.
Item number fifteen, Mr. Chair, is approved without the compliance.
Yes, board, this is the budget that we've advertised. I have not made any changes to this budget. It still has the July date at the bottom of the budget, and we ask for you to approve this budget.
I want to thank you for all your work on this season, as I make the recommendation to approve as presented, Mr. Chair.
Chair, are you making a motion?
And then motions.
Sir, second. I'll second. Any discussion? All is in favor? Vote as unanimous, motion, here. Thank you.
Congratulations, thank you, Ms. Wynn. Item number sixteen, approved purchase of technology hardware. Ms. Finley, welcome back.
So I'm asking for your approval today of a, um, new virtual environment, um, purchase. It's kind of reminiscent for me because six years ago, this was the very first thing I asked you for your approval for a purchase as a technology director. So it's time to replace that again, whole new cycle for us, and Scott's worked very hard. In fact, he worked all summer getting some quotes for this. Um, we also, for the first time, have worked off state contracts, so uh, we were able to get the same pricing from vendors, but how they packaged the turnkey, um, operation for us was kind of one of our exciting factors. So uh, we're going with Howard, who we've used for other projects, or including Saltove and some other things we've had very good success with them. Um, with many other projects. And this virtual environment is basically where we put every application that we use across the district. Um, it's imperative that it run well, and we're actually running out of space in the one we have now. Got a little nervous. Been getting nervous past couple months, it's very cool, and he's been moving things around to make it work, so we're definitely ready to install some new hardware, and it's gonna be a big project for us. Plus, I'll get ordered to put it in for your approval. So, should we go back to the very first page, rather? And again, we use the state contract, so no, um, in-house bidding was required. Um, so the total for installation turnkey project was a hundred thirty-eight thousand, five hundred fifty-six dollars and seventy-nine cents. And we would use, um, S F S funds for this purchase.
And these are S F S funds that you accounted for previously?
Yes, sir. This was in my budget for insurance.
Okay.
We knew it would be to your message, sir.
Make the recommendation to approve as presented, Mr. Chair.
Chair, any motion? For you, sir. I'll support. Omen. Second, motion, second, any discussion? I'm.
So it's not hard right now, back in the past, we could order something and have it here in three weeks. I'm working on it. Um, I came to you last January for switches, and we are still waiting on them coming in. So the supply chain for tech stuff is really, really bad right now. And so, um, the lead time on some of this we checked was a month or so, but then there was some other components that they thought might be ninety days, which to me seems pretty hopeful. But we'll see, maybe by Christmas time, we can have everything and have it installed and fully functioning. Um, but we're also about to switch out all of our switches in the district that we ordered last year that are finally coming in as well. So the supply chain is definitely something that it's been impeding our progress, for sure.
Very good. Thank you. Any further discussion? All is in favor? Vote unanimous, motion, here.
I want to say thank you to Heather and also to Scotty, just as you, as I look through this quote, and knowing enough about it to know that it's a great deal of work, and I thank you. All the motion on that. Okay, next item is number seventeen, approved purchase of transportation equipment. Mr. Enslin, you're back up?
Good afternoon again, board. Uh, come to you with a request for, uh, our new transportation facility. Uh, we want to thank you for what you have done, uh, to make that possible. And what we have today is a quote for sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-four cents for three sets of tools for our technicians. Uh, being new to transportation, I reached out to find out the norms. And reached out to Gilmer County, Union County, Pickens County, Habersham County, and Dawson County, and they all provided tools for their technicians. Uh, Dawson said they had a little bit of a, uh, kind of a half and half, but they still did produce or give, uh, tools to their technicians. Work with Darren, uh, with your approval, about securing those items as well with cameras and Saltoves. And, uh, the good thing is, is as you remember back, it's been several months ago, uh, when we had our buses that were on Gov. Deals, we were able to make a little over fifty-something thousand dollars there along, and then the previous one, we were able to, uh, spend it or collect even more. So we're gonna be able to use the funds with your approval, uh, to purchase these items that will be out of what we're calling the scrap fund that we, uh, sold on Gov. Deal. So that's a, a great way of utilizing those funds, but I would ask for your approval for the three sets of snap-on tools.
Thank you, Mr. Enslin. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval of this purchase as presented.
Well, now your motion?
Have a motion.
Motion to approve purchase transportation. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion?
Yes. Those handles that they.
Yes, sir. These are hand tools, yes, these will be actually go into the, like, the, the toolbox.
Any further discussion? All is in favor? Vote unanimous, motion, here.
Thank you so much.
Alright, thank you, Mr. Enslin. Item number eighteen, approved for policies I K B B and I K B C. So, Mr. Roof, we have two policies that have been tabled since the July meeting. Correct? Okay.
I have to open the mic. There we go. So. Yes, sir. Uh, these, uh, policies, uh, tabled for a month, tabled, uh, since the last board meeting. At this point, we did not receive any, uh, commentary from the public. And again, I know that you all have had the opportunity to, to review these policies. Before we get started, I want to clear up something that I said at last month's board meeting, uh, involving curriculum. Um, and so when it comes to the curriculum that we use in Fannin County School System, we follow the Georgia Standards of Excellence in all of our classes. However, we do have the flexibility and freedom to choose the instructional materials that we want to use in order to best cover these standards and teach our children, uh, here locally. For example, we utilize software programs like Delta Math and I X L to help teach high school mathematics standards. So we do have that flexibility when it comes to the instructional materials that we use. If you look at all of the C T A E and materials, uh, all the stuff that we do in our, in our STEM and STEAM labs, we have that flexibility to, to provide our kids with what we think that they need. Uh, as we discussed at the previous board meeting, we have two policies currently tabled for public review. Policy I K B B, divisive concepts complaint resolution process, and policy I K B C, material harmful to minors complaint resolution process. Uh, the Georgia School Board Association's legal counsel strongly recommends that we adopt these policies as is. As a reminder, these policies provide us with an organized process to allow parents and guardians to file a complaint if they feel that divisive concepts are being covered in a classroom, or if materials harmful to minors are being used in our schools. Uh, just to also clear up, as we know, parents have always had the ability to voice any type of concern, any concern in the Fannin County School System. Uh, these policies just provide more organization to these specific types of complaints. So again, uh, it is strongly recommended by our legal counsel that we adopt these policies as is. So therefore, uh, I am asking, coming and asking for your approval that we adopt both of these policies.
And Mr. Enslin's working his way through. First set, now the second. And as Mr. Roof said, these have been on the table since the last meeting, so one month, and we've not received any feedback on this, so. Mr. Chair, I recommend approval as presented on these policies.
Do we approve both at the same time?
Yes, sir.
We have taken a motion to approve policy I K B B and I K B C.
I have that motion.
Motion, sir, second.
Second.
Motion, second, any discussion?
I have a. Have a. Just.
Yes, sir.
Y'all have. Sense.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. And make sure that our kids get what they need.
Any further discussion? All is in favor? Vote as unanimous, motion, here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. Item number nineteen is personnel. Mr. Chair, I'd refer to you as to whether there's a, a need for executive session.
Executive.
Okay. I can direct your attention to personnel sheet dated eight eleven twenty-two. See if everybody's ready. Okay, resignations. The first is Lynette Hall, effective seven twenty-two twenty-two. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Your motion? Omen. And second?
Second.
All is in favor? Unanimous, motion, carries.
Thank you. The next resignation is Karen Waters, effective seven twenty-six twenty-two. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, all is in favor? Vote unanimous, motion, carries.
Resignation of Rex Jansen, effective seven twenty-eight twenty-two. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Now your motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second, any? All is in favor? Vote unanimous, motion, carries.
And the resignation of Justin Foster, effective eight five twenty-two. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Now your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Reluctant. Second.
Motion, and a reluctant second. All is in favor? Vote unanimous, motion, carries.
Thank you. Direct your attention to recommendations. I'll note that all of these are pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training. The first recommendation this evening is Dana Martin for food service assistant, effective eight twelve twenty-two. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion, second, all is in favor? Vote unanimous, motion, carries.
The recommendation of Hubert Dan Brown as a custodian, eight twelve twenty-two, effective date, Mr. Chair, make the recommendation.
Any motion?
Second.
Motion, second, all is in favor? Vote unanimous, motion, carries.
Thank you. Tamara Payne, school nurse, effective eight twelve twenty-two. Mr. Chair, make the recommendation.
Your motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, second, all is in favor? Vote unanimous, motion, carries.
Thank you. Ansley Waters, a school nurse in the R N field, eight twelve twenty-two. Make the recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Very well, I'll make that motion. Motion, second, all is in favor? Unanimous, motion, carries.
Kayla Fortenberry, bookkeeper, recommendation for eight twelve twenty-two. Make the recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Your motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, all is in favor? Vote unanimous, motion, carries.
And Nicole Fish as a paraprofessional, effective date eight twenty-two twenty-two. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
I'll make that motion, your second.
Second.
Motion, second, all is in favor? Vote unanimous, motion, carries.
Okay, thank you. Recommendations for substitute employees, once again, pending completion of paperwork, background check, and training, we have three that I can take collectively, all effective eight twelve twenty-two. As substitute teachers, Vicky Reimer, Barbara Calista Taylor, and Vanessa Weaver. Make those recommendations, Mr. Chair.
Now your motion?
Omen. I have a second.
Motion, the second, all is in favor? Mr. Adams, motion, carries.
Lynette Hall is a substitute school nutrition, uh, part of the substitute school nutrition program, nine one twenty-two. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Your motion?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion, second, all is in favor? Vote as unanimous, motion, carries.
And Ian Bass, substitute transportation, eight twelve twenty-two. Make that recommendation, Mr. Chair.
Your motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, and a second, all is in favor? Vote unanimous, motion, carries.
Okay, we have one transfer, does not require board action, but since a job posting was related to this development, it was important to, to point out how the job was filled. Teresa Gunnel, a paraprofessional, transferring to East Fannin Elementary School from Mineral Bluff, Miss Ricken. So the announcement will now be modified to reflect, uh, opening at Mineral Bluff. And so, again, Mr. Chair, no actions needed on that, just because it was a posted job, wanted to give you an update as to what was happening with that, so. With that, that takes us to comments. Item number twenty, superintendent's comments. As I begin, I just want us to just all just kind of stop for just a moment and look around this room and think about how much more comfortable we are, how much better we see, how much better we sound, how much better everything looks. And, uh, I'm so thankful to be in this facility. It was a big day to move into this facility for us. Our finance came ahead of us last week, finance department. Uh, the rest of the twenty-two ninety East First Street personnel moved in last Friday, and, uh, we're gonna move nutrition in next week. And so, that requires a great deal of work and coordination, and, and I want to give, he's very modest, very humble, I'm gonna give a huge shout out to Darren Danner. Because he has worked long hours, incredible amount of work to make this happen. Thank you, Darren. I would be remiss not to mention two other people. One, because there was a period of time that we had to work with a phone company at E T C, and we have Frankie Reagan here, thank you, Dan, it's Frankie. But E T C did a great job helping us kind of coordinate the number, because it is a business, you know, business side of this operation. And, uh, so moving the six-three-two-three-seven-seven-one telephone number from twenty-two ninety to this location, Heather came over here and was on our phones and was helping us and helping to coordinate training. Um, Scotty, back there in the back. Basically, if it is, if it's plugged into a wall and lit up and given information, whether you can see it, or it's coming out of that box over in the corner in the form of Wi-Fi, or a million other devices, printers, everything that has to be installed, I've done some of that work too. That's an amazing amount of work, and, and these two deserve another shout out to make all of the tech in this building happen. Thank you. Susan Wynn's work on the budget planning and preparation, great job, Susan. I'm very proud of you. And board, I'm proud of you, because we've been able to present a budget that supports, once again, and we don't take this for granted, a full calendar for our students. One hundred eighty days, unlike others, there's one hundred eighty days for our kids, one hundred ninety days for our teachers, and, uh, we've done this for all personnel, no furloughs, and this is just, it's a wonderful thing, and we're thankful for that. So congratulations to you. I, I know that they're working hard, and the reassessment project has been huge, so I would just, I feel led to give a huge shout out to our, our partners over at the courthouse, Don Cochran, Rita Newton, for the hours that they're putting in to help us, uh, get the data that we need, so that we can recommend a rolled back millage next month. So we're thankful for that. Open houses principals, thank you for everything that you've done to make that happen. The schools look great. The district team came out to the five schools on the open houses, and on the first day of school, I, I was out in schools, district staff was out in the schools. I was blessed to have the chair and vice chair with me, and we saw some wonderful things when we were out in the, uh, in the schools on the first day of school. There was tremendous amount of preparation that goes into that, hard work to prepare. I'm so thankful we got the custodians in here to let them know we appreciate their part in that. And, uh, but most of all, in order for it to go, it requires leadership. And, but most of all, in order for it to go, it requires leadership. And I thank the principals and the district leadership for everything that they've done to successfully launch, once again, I'm very special and thankful. So thankful for that. And to our faculty and staff, students, parents, community, thank you for your part. It's really smart. It was great to see the custodians here tonight, and Dr. Huff, the parent liaisons, I loved having them here. So thank you so much for that work that you did on the presentation. Mr. Roof, Ms. Finley, your presentations, thank you as well. Excited about that draft that you put together. Parents will really benefit from that, because, you know, we offer a tremendous amount of opportunity to engage our constituents, our families, with what we do. And sometimes it's overwhelming, but you created something that puts it all together in one place and makes it easy. So thank you so much for that. Mr. Enslie, looking forward to next Thursday. That's going to be great. This is, this is literally hot off the press. The Georgia Department of Education released a press release just moments really before we came here to get started about a Georgia Department of Education Economic Development Partnership designation that Lucas is at six. Six districts in the state of Georgia have earned this, and Fannin County is one of them. And Lucas, do you want to add anything to that? Yes. Yeah, and that's, and... Yeah, and that, that just speaks to, there's a tremendous amount of relationships between the school system and the community that have to be successfully proven to those evaluators before the paper is proposed. And, and we proved it. And looking for, just watch for that one. We will, we will receive the award in September and turn around and present this to the board, bring this back home in October, look forward to that. Finally, it's been awesome to see all these departments and personnel come together for the benefit of our students. And I'll say, once again, we are blessed here in Fannin County, and I am certainly thankful, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, sir. We started with Galway and Ashland, so we're about to start with East.
Thank y'all for being here. God bless. Safe.
I'm not going to be that sure. Anyhow, we are Fannin.
That's right.
That's all I can say. I appreciate all the principals being here, and I want to tell you this, I don't know how particular you are about cleanliness, but I'm pretty, I'm pretty good on that. Could you imagine, and I'm more than, I don't have the word to express what I want to say about the custodians. Could you imagine, I've got a great granddaughter in school, and she have to go to school and put up a field? I can't imagine. And she don't? That's because we got good custodians in our school. And I'm over jealous, whatever the word is, that we have them. And I want to say a special thanks to the young, I call them teenagers, who came in here in the summer and helped do that. We are blessed in Fannin County. Thank all the principals for being here, and thank everybody for being here. I appreciate you greatly. I appreciate being here with this board. I do. And Ms. Huff, great job on your job in bringing those young ladies in here and letting them claim that. And I'm always excited when we have some of our people from school come in to be recognized, whoever it may be. And we need to do that. We need to show them love, because we are a family. And I think we show each other that we do love each other. So I love you. Have a good night, and I'll let Mr. Cole off.
I'd just like to say thank you, not just to you in the room, but those that are listening as well, to be able to serve you on this board here in Fannin County. I really, I love what I do, love being a part of it, and excited for that. I would like to make mention that something that's been implemented at West Fannin, I was, really wasn't aware of this last year, it was going on at Blue Ridge and East, but that child detection system, I'm not sure what that's called, but it detects the vehicle and tells them, my Lala Kate, she can get ready, the car's coming on campus. And I want to tell you how nice that works. It really works well. And also want to thank the teachers, because, you know, sometimes we see our SROs out there, and I'm so thankful for them, but we don't see the teachers that are really directing the kids in the morning and in the evening at all our campuses. And so I want to thank you for the work that you do in that. I want to bow to Scott and Heather and Mary Ann, because what you do to keep this stuff running is, people don't really know what it takes. As a, as a business owner, I struggle with that, because I have stuff going down all the time. I mean, I'm investing money and stuff don't work right all the time. It takes a lot of effort, and I'm not an IT guy. And so I'm ironing that in to get that done, but it's, it, it's amazing what you do with the amount of people, the amount of stuff that's, that's going out. Because my guy says, you're, you're maxed out on bandwidth, something's taking it. And I'm like, who's taking it? Who's taking it? So I, I, I thank you that, for the work that you do there. And man, how about that SPOS? I mean, at a time when, you know, you're seeing the property values go to an enormous amount of money, and people get confused, because this place you're setting in is free because of SPOS, not, not tax, not property tax. Thankful for the property that is by the high school that is not by property tax, and it's paid for by this SPOS tax. And I hate the property values that have gone so high. I mean, I, I got my tax bill as well. And so I'm, I'm just thankful for the SPOS. And I, I just want us to, people to really understand where, where that's coming from and, and how that, how that works. And that, I see a lot of stuff out there. I'm not one to run from that. They, you know, I see a lot of stuff out there about us buying the property, and I'm sorry, we didn't, we didn't do that, too. So Darren, awesome job, Brandon. That's a, that's a big, big shoes you, you wear, and thank you for all that. And Ms. Connie Huff, that, those liaisons that you have, haven't been able to work with them all, but Ms. Shoffey, Ms. Sebo, tremendous, their heart is in it, they want to get the community involved. Thankful for those custodians. Like our superintendent said, just going through the high schools, middle school, elementary schools, first day, seeing all the work that they, that they've done, and how beautiful it is, how clean it is, just, just amazing. So again, I, I thank you, I thank the principals. Awesome job that you did. God bless them.
Mr. Allen, we will go ahead and announce this. I'll be short too. I want to say definitely thank you for each and everyone that's watching, listening, those that are here, all the presentations. Wonderful, wonderful job. Definitely want to shout out to each and every one of us that thinks of this whole family. Thank you for the great start of the new year, first of the year. Heard it revered around, different things, different principles, said this is one of the best and the easiest that they've had. So I want to say thank you to each and every one that made that possible. And all the parents that jumped in, broke the house, and y'all's participation is amazing. Have a great new year. Y'all practice a hundred percent, and I don't ever want to take that for granted. I love that. Love you people. Thank you for all that y'all did, every, every single one of us. With that, I, I bless you.
It is truly an honor to serve the Board of Education in Fannin County. I stand in awe of each and every one of you, your jobs so well. Dedication and talent and work that you bring to your position, and I'm talking about individually, is remarkable. As Dr. Vaughn you mentioned earlier, I got to two of the schools on the first day of school that I saw so many smiling faces, so many children so excited and happy to be back in school, it just filled my heart. My goodness, the, the, the things that they're getting to do in the classroom now. Thank you, welcome back, Charlie. At any rate, thank you all for what you bring to the table, what you do. I stand in awe of you, and will always be grateful. And our children are the ultimate beneficiaries. I've made myself, when I signed up on the Board of Education many years ago, that I would try to frame every issue and how it will affect student achievement. All of the things that you do here and in your, your, your daily work, they all improve our students' opportunities to achieve. So thankful for that. Thankful for our SPOS tax and, and what it allows us to do. And I understand there's been some confusion about the tax assessments that went out, but as Mr. Wynn so explained so well this evening, we're probably going to, we will approve a rollback rate that will adjust that amount of taxes. As my colleague, your colleague pointed out, tax, your value of your property has gone up, but we're going to adjust the education yield rate so that your taxes remain basically the same as that here. We'll definitely get the actual numbers. Thank you for that. Thank you for what it's allowed us to do for students in Fannin County. Hope you all have a great evening. Thank you for being here, Dr. Huff. I'll indicate motion to adjourn.
A move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All is in favor? Stand, Chair. Thank you.